We are on the record, Council President.
Okay.
Thank you.
Call a council agenda meeting, council agenda meeting of February 4th, 2020, to order at 7:03.
Posted of notice, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the openly public meetings law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December the 18th, 2019, where it has been remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the Newark Star-Ledger on December the 23rd, 2019, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December the 18th, 2019. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.parcipani.net.
Please join me in a flag salute. Goretta?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carriffi?
Here.
Ms. Grignani?
Present.
Ms. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Peterson is excused. Mr. DePiero?
Here.
Okay, also in attendance are Mayor Michael Soriano, Business Administrator Keith Kazmar, Township Attorney Jim Lott, CFO Ann Cucci, Township Clerk Colette Madden. Council President, we have a quorum, you may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, February 18th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m., our regular meeting, and at March 3rd, 2020, at 7:00 p.m., our agenda meeting. Mayor, presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Council President.
The only presentation I have is this. Next Friday is Valentine's Day, and it shouldn't just be a day that you remember your sweetheart, you know, someone that you have romantic love with, but there are people in everyone's lives that sometimes you forget to tell them how you feel about them. Friends, family members, distant family members. So I would say in the next week, everyone here, try to reach out to one person that you care about, that you haven't heard from in a while, that you haven't talked to in a while. And I want to wish everyone here and the entire township a happy Valentine's Day. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Well, you have some recommendations for the Knoll Advisory Committee, too.
Yes, yes. That's, well, we have 10 names. I'm submitting them here. Hold on with my agenda. Thank you. Okay. And I will read them as follows. The Knoll Golf, the Knoll Country Club Golf Advisory Committee, I am, between myself and in collaboration with Council President DePiero, we are submitting these names for approval by the council. And they are Kevin Broncato, Phil Marshall, David Fulton, Pat Lanza, Brad Muniz, Davy Willens, Donna Piero, Al Paradise, Jim Curry, Adam Gragnani.
Now, before a motion is made, for the record, these are three-year appointments, and if there are no objections on any of them, we'll do one motion approving everyone instead of individual motions. I apologize, Mr. Carriffi, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the whole list.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Carriffi, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Discussion?
Just, just one point. When, the last two years when we were having problems with running to the Knoll by our Kemper organization, most of the names on this list, which was the original advisory committee, these were the, these were the members, out of all of the members at the Knoll, east or west, these were the people that came to our council meetings, several of them, and expressed concern about the well-being of the Knoll with Kemper in command. So, these are the ones who actually had cared enough to come to council meetings and express their concern about the well-being of the Knoll. So, this is a very good committee to be appointed.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call. Mr. Carriffi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I thank the mayor for appointing them.
There will be two more appointments forthcoming to round out the committee for an even number of 12.
Fine. Okay.
Okay, Township Attorney?
Let me just see, Mr. President, I think I may have closed session items as noted on the agenda, correct.
No changes to that closed session agenda?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Administration Administrator?
Good evening, Council President. First, I just want to report out a few items that are on the agenda tonight. We have the approval of the ASME contract. ASME represents the blue collar supervisors in the township throughout various departments. We also have for your review, the award of the Rogers Group contract, which would allow for the accreditation process to start with the Parcypani Police Department. We have five tax appeal settlements on for tonight. Our tax assessor is here, so when we do get to the consent agenda portion of the meeting, if there are any concerns or questions, Dan is here to answer those questions. There's also a resolution with regard to an application that we need to file with the Department of Environmental Protection relative to the re-establishment of Well 20, which the council was briefed on in a previous executive session. I also have one executive session matter related to personnel. But the main attraction tonight is the PAL and Police Department presentation on some of the activities happening down at the PAL. And at this time, I'd like to introduce the President of the PAL Board, Mr. James Garrick, for some remarks.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for reminding me about Valentine's Day next week. It's also my anniversary, so I don't want to be slipping and hilton on Route 10.
Okay. I'm glad to keep you out of trouble.
Thank you. I'm here tonight. I've taught for 37 years, I never used my voice.
You don't need a mic. It doesn't sound like you need a mic, but we just need it for the record.
I'm here tonight, and my name is Jim Garrick. I thank you very much for having us tonight, and I'm going to introduce Sam in a few minutes, he's going to put the presentation on.
And, looking good? And, yeah, and I've been with the Board for over 12 years, I guess, and I started out as a regular member, worked my way up to VP, and now I'm President, and tonight, our past President is here, Dr. Joe, thank you for all your contributions to the Board. But I just want to talk about, last March, Sam was hired, Sam Yodeis was hired as our Executive Director, and it's been quite a year for us. I, I took over the presidency last January, and it's been a real pleasure working with him, and I, I hope you get the opportunity, as you'll see tonight on the presentation, if you can stop over and see the facility. There's a lot of changes physically to the building, there's a lot of new programs, a lot of different, new equipment in the building, and a lot of it because of Sam. He's energetic, he's confident, he loves kids, he loves the programs that he's putting together for us now. We have board meetings once a month, and his, his agenda is about five pages long now, but that's what it's taking to get the job done, and it's really great to watch all the different things he wants to bring forward. He, you'll see in his presentation, I, I sit there sometimes and I go, he did this in a week. We would speak about it, and next thing you know, it's done. So, I'm really, really proud to be working with him, I'm proud to be President of the Board. If you do come over to the building, it's always full, so I hope you get a parking spot. But, in closing, I'd just like to thank all of the people here tonight. Joe Plecher's here, Ashley's here, our fellow, Joe O'Neil's here, and I took care of that in introducing them, but, but I, I'm going to just close now, and it's my pleasure, Sam's going to do the presentation, but it's my pleasure to introduce Sam Yodeis as the Executive Director of the Police Athletic League in Parcypani.
I don't know. I didn't, I didn't have to pay him a dollar to say any of this. Mayor, Council, Council President, I want to thank everyone this evening for allowing us to come forward and present a presentation, kind of give our state of the PAL. Jimmy mentioned it, but I, I do have to express just how much I do love this job. This is absolutely a pleasure every single day to walk in that place and, and try to bring it to a place and, and bring it forward to a, to an expectation and a standard that, that I don't, I don't think is, not necessarily hasn't been there, but it's, it's something we're just, we're excited about. There's a lot of energy going forward, and hopefully, you'll get a good piece of what we're doing there. This is really only a snapshot. I really want to keep an open invitation to come down and talk and sit and talk in more detail about what we are doing. But, without any further ado, I do have to thank-
Mr. Yodeis, I'm sorry to interrupt, if you can just grab, just talk into the mic.
Do, so-
Take the mic, please.
Yeah, take the mic with you.
All right.
Because it's such a great presentation, I just want to make sure we're going to have it on the record. All right?
Got you, sir. All right. First slide here is pretty, is pretty obvious. The Parcypani logos on the left are the older version. When I started here, I felt as though there was some ambiguity with who the PAL is and where the PAL is going, and who the PAL serves. And it was, in a lot of conversations, and a lot of, a lot of people throughout the community, I always felt as though the PAL was associated to one side of town. And being that, at some point back in 2009, they changed from the Panthers to the Redhawks, they basically did associate themselves with one side of the town. So I feel like we need to kind of take a step back. So, if you see the, the PAL branding on the left-hand side, we, we rebranded ourself in order to reintroduce ourself to the community. And the color scheme is in line with both Par Hills and Par High. Okay, so you get the navy, the light blue and the black from the Par Hills and the Viking side, you get the red and the gray from the Par High side, and the idea is kind of a subliminal message that, hey, we're here for the entire community, we're not here for one side of the town or the other, we're here for everybody. And as the PAL stands, the acronym Police Athletic League, we wanted to introduce the word "activities" because we're not just here for football, baseball, basketball, right? We are here as a mentoring place, as a place, as an outlet, just to walk in the building and, and provide some kind of free time when there's no school, out of school. And, you know, the two kids in the center there obviously symbolizes that we're, you know, we're here just for, for the youth of our, of our community. So, a lot of thought went into that, and, and I hope everyone can appreciate the fact that why we did it, but we really did it to marry up both sides of the town. I'm hoping technology works here, so. There we go. So, second slide here is the mission, okay? I, I don't want to come up here and talk about, you know, a mission statement and a vision and things like that, but I do want to tell you why it's important. I think for too long, the ambiguity, and I'm going to use that word, it's going to be a consistent word that I use here, it, at the PAL, we have to align ourselves and be committed to coming up with a mission that creates programs that make sense. Okay, let's not just bring in a program for a few weeks, run it for a month or so, and then let it go by its wayside. Let's find our mission, find our how, and then follow through and be committed to the type of, types of programs we want to bring forward. And in doing so, we need to align ourselves with our vision, and we need to create partnerships. The partnerships that I really truly believe that we need to continue to develop deeper, stronger ancillary pieces to the, to the, to the PAL as a whole, and the foundation of the PAL is the Police Department's number one, right? The PAL is about cops and it's about helping kids. Next is the Recreation Department. Too many times, I think, you go to the Recreation Department, you go to the PAL, you go back to the Recreation Department, you go back to the PAL, and you kind of got to figure out where the services lie. So we're going to try to, you know, bring some synergy to that, to, to both the Recreation Department and the PAL, and hopefully, we can deliver those services to the community as one. The School District, there are multiple programs that the school has currently, as well as obviously, you know, I know Chief is going to talk a lot about what we're doing in the school, but in order to get our youth into our building and into our programs, we need to be involved in the school, and we need to see what's going on there, and we need to be able to bring that forward as well. Community Organizations. Too many times, I also believe that there was a little bit of a disconnect with community organizations, and, and later on in slides, you'll see, we are starting to connect with Girl Scouts, we are trying to connect with our, we've sat down with the soccer club, we've sat down with Par Troy West and East, and, and we've sat down with the other organizations in town, not to isolate the PAL, but to be a part of the rest of the community, and however we can extend the helping hand, whether it be as a training facility, or a meeting place, or anything else in between, we want to be able to do that. And I think something that's new up there, and, and you kind of see, we're kind of wrapping around, I'm really hoping, we've had some development already in meeting with the Knoll and starting a youth program at the very, very, very elementary level, and our first, our first conversations include a program called First T that will introduce golf to kindergarteners through fifth grade. So, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later, but I, I believe that's a partnership that has amazing potential, and I, the, the ideal situation with the, the Knoll is this. This community has a soccer club, it has multiple baseball organizations, it has organizations all throughout the community. So the PAL shouldn't be going out there and trying to compete with those organizations, we should be collaborating with those organizations and filling the gaps. So golf is one of them, the mentoring pieces are, are, are other pieces. So we're going to try to fill those gaps, and I believe the, the potential partnership with the Knoll and the continued conversations are something that we should really look forward to. Fostering sustainable programs, I know there's a lot of information there, and just, if anybody wants them, I also have a hard copy for anybody, maybe wants to take notes or kind of review it later. I'm not going to read everything, for sure, but, again, going back and kind of tying everything together, we want to be able to foster programs that we can sustain for long periods of time, and then we get people to keep coming back, and enrollment stays strong, and we get to keep moving forward. I, I do want to talk very briefly on the bottom of the slide there, though, is core values. And I do believe these are important because we needed to kind of hit the reset button a little bit when I started down there, and, and I say that because the safety of the facility is something that we need to keep as a paramount, paramount focus. Our principles going forward with the types of programs need to be consistent and need to stay online. Quality service. I, I say that, and I have to just kind of throw a little shout out to Ashley, and since she's been kind of on our team down there, she's been nothing but exceptional in working with me. The rest of the team that is down there, I know the township is only aware of two or three employees that, that are kind of on the township payroll, per se, but we do have about a dozen other employees that we employ down there at the PAL, and it's our job, it's my job as a, as a supervisor, to make sure that we are providing quality service that makes complete compassion and empathy towards, or provides complete compassion and empathy and good customer service to our community. Diversity include, the foundation was set with our special needs program a long time ago, and we are going to continue to move that forward, and we're excited about it. Transparency, I, I do think, I, I've sat in many board meetings now, I, I think it is only a priority, it has to be a priority for our organization to be transparent throughout the community. And accountability, that one, I'm going to take, I'm going to be selfish on that one, that one's on me, I'm accountable to, obviously, each one of you up there, and I'm accountable to this community, and I will hold the PAL organization accountable to this community, and I believe we need to be able to put our best foot forward every day, and that accountability piece starts with me and will filter down through the rest of the organization. And finally, learning and improving. I, I will never sit up here and claim that we're doing everything right, I will never sit up here and claim that I know everything, but I do know, every single day, I will walk in that place, and we will figure out how to learn and get better every single day. So a little slide on the left and the right, slides on the left, 25,000 to 30,000 people, that is how many people actually walk through those front doors every year. I don't know if everybody noted, knows that number, we did some small calculations. When you think about the sheer volume of people that walk through our building, it's an amazing number, and, and the amount of people we can touch through that number is, you know, again, when you talk about being excited about what you do, that's the number that you sit there and you say, wow, you know, we can really touch some family in some way, shape, or form through our building and through what we're doing. One of the great things that was set a long time ago at the PAL was the hours. That building is accessible, and there is no need to change that. We are open over 100 hours a week. When you think about from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., seven days a week, that's 100-plus hours every single week, and to be honest with you, we are busy probably 50 of them. So it's going to be our job going forward, how to figure out how to occupy the other 40 to 50 hours a week and fill that building with, with people. I, I mentioned the special needs piece, GWF is Games With Friends, that is a piece that was established under my predecessor, phenomenal program, absolutely great, I just, it needs to be mentioned because it's a great program, and we are also in the, in the process of expanding that program as well. JALP as well, that's a program I know the Chief will speak more on, but that is something, the Junior Accountability Leadership Program, one of our mentoring pieces in, in the PAL that is, again, just an impactful program. Bingo. I put that up there because bingo's important. We're nonprofit, and I know there's some subsidies out there with, with, with the township, but bingo is one of our primary revenue sources. Each week, we, not only is it a revenue and a fundraising source, but it's a community piece, right? So every week, we have 100 to 125 people sitting in our building, playing bingo, some leave cranky, some leave happy, and, especially when the, the progressive gets high and they have to actually claim it, right? They get, they're not happy about that one, but, but overall, I just, look, the foundation is set at, at the, at the PAL to be able to bring our organization to the next, the next level and, and the standard that we really are looking forward to achieving. On the right side, the foundation set, there's a ton of positives I can talk about, but there have been challenges as well. And, safety compliance, to be very honest with you, the building was neglected, and we were out of compliance in a number of areas, the safety of the building was questionable at best. Ambiguity, I, I mentioned that earlier, I think we need to be more clear on who we serve and how and why we serve and why we're running each program. The facility maintenance piece, again, there was, again, there was neglect there, and we've, we've started to address those issues. Direct programming, I say that because for a long time, the PAL subcontracted or worked with people to run programs and didn't run a lot of things directly. They didn't have a real control on what they were running, and we're going to try to change that model, and we want to bring our programs in and control those programs so we can make sure that they're running to, to the expectation. Community partnerships, community partnerships, I, you're going to, I have a whole slide on that, we're going to talk more, but I believe it takes this entire community to build what we want to build at the PAL. And, and the last piece there is rentals. A big piece of the revenue stream for the PAL has always been rentals, renting out that facility. They've generated over 130, $140,000, $140,000 a year on rentals. I want to find a way to get away from that, and I, I do have a plan for that, but the reason for that, more importantly, is the fact that you have to realize, every time we rent out that building, every time we bring in a Tricky Tray or a Beef Steak or something other, we're closing that room or we're closing that building down to our kids and our youth and programs that could be running. Not that there's not a place for Tricky Trays and Beef Steaks and things like that, but is it aligned with our vision, is it, is it aligned with what we're trying to do? I'm not quite sure, and we need to be able to open those doors to our kids and more programming, and that's, that's the idea there. Our facility improvements, I'm going to start touching on some of these issues. The first thing we did, we had a facility inspection and safety audit, an actual company that comes out and, and looks at all of the safety equipment and all of the athletic equipment that's in the building. We were unsatisfactory in many areas, and most of them have been addressed by now. Daily site maintenance, we now have hired a company that comes in every single morning. They're there every morning at 5:00 a.m., we actually check on camera, I'm not there at 5:00 a.m., and I'm never going to claim to be, but he's in there at 5:00 a.m., and he runs through the building and gets, gets a look at every room and cleans, both cleanliness and for sanitary reasons, that is incredibly important. Deep cleanings, I am requiring that maintenance crew to have a lavatory in the locker room deep cleaning every quarter. Okay, that was something that was, that, when you see some of the slides later, you'll know why that's necessary. When I started in March, and my first full month here, we had a fire prevention inspection, and I was very welcoming to our fire prevention team, I was looking forward to fire prevention, and we walked the building and we had 33 fire code violations. 33. As of, and you can look at the date there, 1/21/19, yes, this week, we are down to four, and I, I'm going to say those four are relatively, nothing significant, but these are, these are items that are very, very, very doable, and, and we're, we're happy to be able to, have been able to turn that around in, in less than 10 months. So, our APR room, which is the large all-purpose room, that's had a complete makeover and complete facelift, it doesn't look anything like you're used to it ever being, if you've ever been in that room, it's a completely different color, there's no signs, it's been completely sanitized, and, and again, the facelift is, is impressive if you walk in there. And I have to thank the, the Painters Union because they came in and worked with us, DC 7-Eleven, and saved us thousands upon thousands of dollars. Our Electrical Union as well, Electrical Union 102 came out, we had a number of electrical outlets all throughout the building, a number of electrical problems all throughout the building, they upgraded everything, fixed everything for us. Again, that was, that was a number of some of the fire codes that were also listed as well. And, one of the main reasons we had the electrical upgrades was we wanted to have outlets on the outside of the building so we can have our wonderful trunk or treat and the outside of the building decorated, as we know, it rained. We didn't use one darn outlet, because everything was inside, but we're looking forward to going next year and, and having our, our facility decorated on the outside, and we're, you know, it's, it's, it's an exciting thing. And, you know, I'm going to highlight some of the things on the right, our four new basketball backboards, in gym one, we had four backboards that were all deemed unsatisfactory, almost condemned, and we, they needed to be replaced, and that was a major upgrade, that was a major situation that we had to figure out how to, how to do that, we did that. That's, that project was just completed about a month ago. That will also allow us to increase programming because now they'll be adjustable, so we can have kindergarteners do second graders in that gym. We had a ramp on the side of the building that the PAL had three lawsuits due to injury because it was just a dilapidated ramp that was, you'll, again, you'll see the pictures, we were able to take care of that and completely restructure that piece. The floors, every floor in that building has been cleaned, sanitized, stripped, and finished. You can, and, if you ever walk through the building with me on a Monday morning, it's, 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 it's something that I, I, you know, every morning, I get on Route 80 and I get on Route 46, and I hit that Parcypani Pride sign, and I say, yeah, Parcypani Pride, but I have PAL pride, okay? You need to be able to create an environment that kids want to participate in and families want to come to. So, if it's not clean, they're not going to participate, and they're not going to come. And the floors is the first part of that. And we changed out all of our thermostats, we now have remote automated thermostats, so I can control and see what's going on with our energy all day long, all evening long, and I can guarantee you, there have been times at midnight, I'm checking to make sure our heat is off when it needs to be off. And we had a number of longstanding leaks and issues, water issues throughout the exterior of the building that caused several interior issues, and we were able to take care of each of those. So, with that being said, I'm just going to pass out, I'm going to, if you want, just spread them across, and I have some to go this way.
Thank you.
There's just, there's packets for everybody.
Oh, okay.
I believe I have one for everyone. If I don't, let me know. I'm not going to go through each picture, that's more for your reference, they're mostly before and afters, but I do want to touch on some of the facility issues. This is the ramp that we're talking about, this ramp is on the side of the building, it's a loading ramp for a number of issues, number of events, wheelchair accessibility as well, and it was literally falling apart. And, again, this was the issue with, that we had a number of lawsuits, we were able to kind of take care of that and, and, and make sure that is up to code. This is some of the water issues we had, we had water and, and leader issues where the leaders were not connected to any kind of drainage system, so all of the water that was coming off of our 40,000 square foot roof was essentially just sitting in our foundation, causing a lot of, a lot of water damage throughout the building. You could see one of the leaders there, down in the middle, that is just a situation where somebody just needed to go up there and clean it out. And I can tell you, not because I'm trying to put a little pat on my back, but I was up there elbow-deep in mud- up there elbow-deep in muck in our leaders, you know, cleaning it out. And the one all the way to the right, again, it just, drainage issues that were just neglected for a long, long time. Top-left picture there is our flagpole. Yes, our flagpole, the United States of America, our flagpole was kind of just sitting there, uprooted, and it didn't take much, right? It's just, it's a little, again, it's a little pride. Let's just go in there and do the right thing. Bottom picture there is our bathrooms. On the left, grout lines, rather dark. On the right, hey, it's amazing what a little cleaning can do. And the pictures to the right are the, I can't even make up that top picture. That is literally a classroom that kids would go in and that's what the floors looked like. The pictures probably don't do it justice. The picture to the right is after it was done. And the picture on the bottom is the hallway floor. On the left, you can kind of see the finished piece and on the right, you can see where it was obviously, you know, still obviously rather dirty. So these are the things that we're working on. And moving forward, the biggest task that I probably had to take on as well was when we took over, we had a non-compliant warming center. So the PAL is a warming center for the county and we had three heating units that were down on the roof, which I walked into in March and didn't realize on half of the building we didn't have heat. The heat exchangers were gone in three of our rooftop units on the roof. After getting proposals to replace three of those units would have cost us about $50,000. So I can tell you now, we do not have $50,000. Our treasurer is over there. We don't have 50 grand. So we had to get creative. And we kind of scoured programs and we scoured different ideas and thoughts and different things. And I also was kind of kicking the idea and kind of venting more so to Kurt Nebraska at the Knoll. And he talked about Donally Energy and talked about what was done up at the Knoll. So we started to explore that option. And all in, we were able to replace 12 rooftop units and upgrade the entire facility to LED lighting. The total project cost, if we would have had to pay for that, was $267,000. We were able to get incentives from the state for $147,000, which still leaves the PAL on the hook for $119,000, but we were also able to work through a three-year negotiation at zero interest. Now, with the savings that we are going to see through the energy piece, we'll probably be saving about $1,200 to $1,800 a month depending on how good we are with our thermostats. That's why I look at them at midnight in my living room. But with that being said, we're looking at, you know, a payment over the next three years of about $1,500 a month that hopefully is significantly more affordable. And we've now upgraded our entire HVAC system, which would have cost, again, clear over $260,000, $70,000. So it was an incredible project. It was actually a lot of fun, day of. Joe was, we were like kids with toys. I mean, we had a 100-ton crane, they were lifting these Volkswagen's onto the roof. It was a pretty interesting scene, it was pretty cool. I know there's a lot to talk about going here and I do apologize, but it's really important that we get some of this off. First impressions are lasting impressions. You know, we got to create an environment that people want to participate in. Our building appearance is important. The exterior of the building should be compatible with the interior of the building. And our parking lot, our building entry, our landscaping, every piece of what we do has to matter. And it does to us. And if we look good on the outside and we look good on the inside, that means our programming is going to look good and everything else in between is going to tie in and come together. Moving along, any questions on the facility? Anything I could address? Anything at all? No? Programming. We are creating a bunch of new initiatives. I'm not going to talk a lot about what we did do, I'm going to talk about what we're going to do. And this is one of the new initiatives we're excited to introduce and we have some planning yet and we have some figuring out how we're going to implement it, but we've had the conversations with the chief, we've had the conversations with the community policing, and we're looking forward to be able to present this 15-week physical, mental, and character-building program, which is P-to-P, stands for Police-to-Peer Safety and Wellness Program. So it addresses suicide awareness, it addresses well-being, it addresses social media safety, it addresses all types of social awareness and a lot of things that are going on around this, you know, in this world today. Cops and kids bridging the gap. It's also just a piece of bringing cops and kids together and trying to figure out, hey, you know what? This matters, you know? And enough is enough. It's another whole educational piece on the voice against bullying. And so I think it's a phenomenal program. I think it's something that, again, when we talk about the PAL, we're going to bring kids together, we're going to bring cops together and we're going to educate them, not only in the physical aspect, but in the mental capacity and the mental wellness as Our National PAL, we have a great relationship with the National PAL, partly because we have a board member in Joe Plecha that sits on the National PAL Board as well. And we are looking forward to building a much better relationship with the National PAL. And in doing so, last year, we did not participate in the National Mentoring Grant. And this year, we're looking forward to receiving that award. And I can't discount that award. That is an award that in the past has been an award up to almost $30,000. I think we're looking at somewhere between $20,000 and $30,000 to run a complete mentoring program. The award hasn't been given yet. I think, you know, we're confident, right, Joe, that we're going to get this award? And this is another piece that we're going to be able to implement as a mentoring piece and bring the inclusiveness to the PAL and touch more families and more kids.
We didn't pick up on that. You said you are the treasurer?
Yes.
Okay.
Counsel President, right? I mean, we should, this should be a no-brainer, we should get this one, right? This one's fun. This is an interesting project and we've sat down with the Girl Scouts here in town and they wanted to do a community project and they wanted to do something here with us at the PAL. We had a bunch of conversations, we went back and forth with a lot of different ideas. And this is, I'm going to be a little corny, I apologize, I'm going to preface my joke with installing inspiration, okay? These bathroom stalls, if you've ever walked in our building, are just like any other manila-colored, you know, peach-colored bathroom, which we can then turn around and promote community, promote kindness, and promote openness. And we have an artist on the police department in Remo DeLisandro, who is willing to work with our Girl Scouts in basically, you know, mocking out all of what we're going to paint and draw and put on the walls. And then the girls are going to kind of fill in the blanks and paint everything. And we're really looking forward to, and you can see some of the comments there, stand up for what is right even when you're standing alone. And we're kind of scouring different quotes and different inspirational messages that we can provide to our community. And again, you know, it's paint, so it's something that could be updated, you know, as time passes.
And that will be installed in both the men, the young men and the women?
Men and women, and we're also looking to do both men and women's locker rooms. So there's, and we actually have talked a little bit about doing some things in the hallway. I will tell you, that's a program where you kind of, you can kind of veer off, you know? So it's really important and we've been really conscious of making sure we're on point and we're not going to overdo it and it's done in a classy, tasteful way. So. Community partnerships. The recreation department, when I sat down, it took some figuring out, some navigation of figuring out how we could work together, but we are, we're on the highway. I mean, we are moving about as fast as you can go. The trunk-or-treat was one of our first pieces and, you know, the Monster Mash, as everybody knows, we had probably too many people in the building that day. I'm glad fire prevention didn't show up that day. And I will steal a quote from the mayor when he said, Halloween is just better outside, you know? So it just is. So it was a great night, it was a successful night, but it was intense. The rainy day and summer camp, this is something I really think we need to talk about because the all-day camp program down at Smithfield always struggled on days when it rained. And the PAL was always booked, you know, naturally all summer long. And it never really made an effort at making sure it could work with the camp or the recreation department to provide those days when it rains. Now, all summer last year, we were able to open our doors and every day that it rained, and it rained a lot last year, Coach B will tell you, Coach B runs the all-day camp down there, she does not like being inside. However, we now have an opportunity to provide our kids with a place to go when it rains and our families don't have to take a day off from work and they have that opportunity to come in there. And with that, it's a slash summer camp because we've taken, we saw what we did last summer and we're going to parlay that into a complete rotation of having the kids outside and inside and rotate them throughout the camp. And what that will allow us to do, it'll allow us to open up and increase the amount of enrollment that we have in our summer camp. So that's going to be something that's completely new coming this summer and we're excited about it. And we're kind of taking baby steps towards it, but, Joe, what was the number we've looked at increasing?
At least 50.
Yeah. So.
Which is 20%.
Ice hockey program, we work directly with the recreation department in taking on a new ice hockey program, something that was not provided throughout the township in the past. Townwide events and support, that's just something we talk about constantly. What else can we do?
Where do they play ice hockey?
At the youth level? They had to, they had to go to a club, some private club or private organization.
The Men in Arena? They're usually booked.
Ah, where? Aspen, yeah, Aspen.
Aspen.
It's up in Reno.
Yeah. Okay.
And with that too, if you know, both high schools have a regional hockey team. So what we were able to do, obviously, you know, with our whole idea and our whole concept, being a regional ice hockey team, we're hoping to be able to start to parlay that with the both high school coaches and the high school team and really become a good feeder program for the high school.
Did they do well in their first year?
Mayor, we are proud and excited to announce in their inaugural season, they were the champions of their respective league.
Yes, we had them here.
Yeah, we had the celebration on the Christmas tree presentation.
I'm just really proud of that.
And software and database. This is important because right now at the PAL, when we walked in, we had no software and no database to be able to track any of our members, any of our programs. And we have been able to partner with the rec department and their program, an ActiveNet, which is an expensive program, and we've been able to work right alongside them. And now we've instituted that entire system at the PAL, which is allowing us to be able to be much more organized internally. Mr. Dupireau? The Knoll? Okay? These are real conversations that are happening right now. We met twice with a company called The First Tee and Mr. Bacato and John McCarthy brought The First Tee Network to us. They asked for us to meet, we did meet with them. We met with them once, we had a great conversation, we met with them the second time and on the second time, we said, we're going to do this program. So very soon, we will be kicking off a K-4 golf program and it will take place, right? It'll be an indoor golf program, training educational program inside the PAL. And we're excited about that. So that kind of got our wheels turning with if we can do the right things with the facility, we believe we can help the Knoll and work alongside with the Knoll and develop a real golf program during those off months indoors, okay? For the juniors, seniors, military, and other, you know, anybody really, honestly. It can be a wide-ranging outlet for people who want to learn golf in those months from, you know, late November through March.
Right behind you, Kevin, is nodding, up and nodding his head there.
Yeah. We had a meeting yesterday with the New Jersey Golf Foundation. The New Jersey Golf Foundation has a whole program, which they call, you know, it's basically just growing the game. And it's a whole-game approach though. It's not just, hey, get a club and go hit and get some lessons. It's about getting into the schools. So we want to start having a conversation with the school district and they implement a one- or two-week introductory to golf into the phys ed curriculum. And then what they do is they take that curriculum, right? We take that curriculum and then we can kind of parlay that into a transition at the PAL. And then, let's all be honest, it's not any fun being indoors and hitting a ball, right? We ultimately want to get to the Knoll and go play golf and have some fun. But sometimes getting, I will tell you, me in particular, sometimes getting on that course is intimidating. And, you know, I had, I said something yesterday to the people from the New Jersey Golf Foundation. I'm a father, I have a five-year-old, right? I have a two-year-old. And you talk about growing the game, I don't know if I'd ever bring my five-year-old on a golf course. I'd be scared to death of all the real golfers around me. But I would bring them to the PAL to learn the game and get that swing and get familiar with the game. And then all of a sudden, I might actually go over to the Knoll and, hey, let's go play golf with my seven-year-old, my eight-year-old, my 10-year-old. And then all of a sudden, there's mothers and there's fathers out there that can now go play a new game that they would have never done before, but we now have that. Or it would have been extremely expensive to do at a private golf academy or different things, but we can do that at the PAL. Off-hours at the PAL, again, from 6:00 a.m., 6:30 a.m., 7:00 a.m. till about 2:00, 3:00 in the afternoon, there's a lot of empty time at the PAL. So we can do this at, when we talk about the golf program, we talk about different things, we talk about strictly working with military people, women, special needs, kids, youth, junior, the list goes on and on and on. It was just, you know, what I identified there. But our off-hours at the PAL need to be occupied and I believe the golf program is something we can really build something fun and special. Again, why golf? We're not doing soccer, we're not doing baseball, we're not doing softball. Let's fill the gaps, okay? Future programming and new programming. So it's been 10 months and everything you see on the right side was not here before, okay? Wrestling, one of the first things we did, wrestling used to be a program involved at the PAL. They left the PAL, they had some major differences and there were, there was, the wrestling program and the wrestling club has kind of gone through a complete reset in itself. So we thought it was a good time to sit down with them and explore the options of coming back. It's a completely new organization and in doing so, they agreed. So we were able to bring wrestling back from an outside entity and we brought them back to the PAL and now they are the PAL wrestling team that we are proud to present and work with every single day. They've been an absolute pleasure to work with for the last three or four months. I mentioned ice hockey already, obviously, we're extremely excited about the year they had and that's only a program that can expand. K-2 basketball. Our basketball program here has about 360 kids in it. Since we started, we introduced a K-2 program that is on Saturday mornings, that is now 60 to 70 kids, families deep and completely new. We never offered a K-2 program before. It's something we did and we are doing it in combination with US Sports. So US Sports is a company that comes in with certified coaches and actually are coaching our kids. So the K-2 are really getting a real true connection and a real true, you know, real strong coaching presence with the company we're working with. Basketball versus Mountain Lakes, that is a collaboration. Our girls program with basketball, we just didn't have enough girls and they were going to be forced to either not play or have to basically play against each other 15 times a year and that's not very fun, let's be honest. So we were able to go out, find, make a collaboration with Mountain Lakes. So our girls program works, plays alongside and with Mountain Lakes and all of the games are at the PAL. We do not travel to the Mountain Lakes at all, everything is at our facility. So we've been able to accommodate that and our girls have been able to have a completely different program. Basketball, complete transparency, again, we had a, you know, we had a few hiccups this year. They've worked themselves out. With everything you see that we've done, we've been able to work really well with every program, football, baseball, I'm sorry, football, cheerleading, every program that we've worked with thus far has been great. And we had hiccups with basketball, but we've worked them through, we're really on, I think, a good place now. Volleyball, volleyball, again, completely new. We were able to, we're really lucky to find a coach in Mike Doctor, who is an administrator in Clifton High School and has a long decorated career in coaching high school volleyball, him and his wife, who have taken the initiative to kind of create this entire volleyball program. And it's a clinic piece that is, will transition into a full league at some point. Kid fitness and fitness gym. This is future, okay? This is a conversation that we're having. As you know, if you've ever walked into the PAL, there is a room to the left there that's a boxing room. Well, if boxing wants to stay, boxing needs to be more welcoming and needs to be more a part of our community. So what we want to do is make that person who runs that program, make it a kid fitness program and create a fitness gym that can be open not only to the youth of our community, but we're also toying with the idea of coming up with kind of a smaller fitness center for employees throughout our organization here in Percippany as well. And, you know, well, why not, if you're going to go work out, why not go work out at the PAL rather than spend 20 bucks at Gold's Gym every month, right? So we are, we're working on reorganizing that gym, relocating that gym. We have a lot of different ideas and conversation on what we want to do there. Along the same lines of that gym is the Parkinson's program. So boxing has evidence-based research that the balance and the motor skills and all of the different things you do in boxing and all the training you do in boxing. and all the training you do in boxing actually reduces the degenerative process of Parkinson's. It's a program called Rock Steady Boxing. It's primarily orchestrated right now out West. However, we will be the, one of the first two organizations on the East Coast to bring it to the East Coast. In doing so, the gentleman who runs the boxing fitness gym went out to Indianapolis. He is now a certified trainer in Parkinson's. We're looking to partner with Care One, who we've obviously received a substantial donation from. And we will work with patients from Care One. We have some contacts out with Atlantic Health. We have some conversations with neurologists that really firmly believe in this program. And what that will allow us to do is be able to open up our facility at 6:00 AM, 7:00 AM, 9:00 AM, 10:00 AM, and get Parkinson's patients training in a really good fitness environment and obviously help them in a much different way than they've ever been able to work out or train in the past. Competition cheer. Last year, the girls only had 12 girls. This year, they have over 30. That is partly because we're working much closer with our commissioner in both trying to increase enrollment and everything we're doing with our budget and everything else in between. Bingo. The Bingo program has been there. The Bingo has been fun. However, we decided to, listen, we're changing everything. Why not change Bingo? So, we added a second jackpot. So, now, as Bingo builds and builds and builds, you kind of get a jackpot, and then nobody shows up for a few weeks. So, now, we're going to have kind of an offsetting double jackpot. So, you have more opportunity to win, which will, in turn, allow us to fundraise and generate more revenue, right? And Games with Friends is our special needs programs, where our program meets on a weekly basis with all of our special needs kids throughout the community. We have sat with our director who runs that program. And we are adamant that we want to expand that program, not to just kids, but special needs adults, okay? There are a lot of adults out there that need to find a place to figure out and have that social aspect. And they don't always meet at the PAL. We organize nights at the bowling alley. We organize nights at culinary institutes or restaurants and things like that for the adults. So, it's a little bit different. All of these things we want to do, at the end of the day, cost money. So, how are we going to get there? And everything that we are doing is based around our fundraising model. And everything you see there, from in-kind donations to support to resources, online fundraising, financial endowment, money, grants, special events, everything is, I could talk probably for another hour just on fundraising and how we're going to go about doing it. We've been lucky enough in 10 months to align ourselves with three corporate, private-sector companies. Care One was the first one that came, Chick-fil-A was actually the first one that came on board to give us $5,000 in both donations and food cards for our Bingo winners. And they help us dramatically each month, being able to subsidize our Bingo games. And they are more than willing to come back to the table and talk about more that they can offer through their foundation. Care One, I think many of the people in this room were at that ceremony that day. They obviously gave us $5,000. And I kind of tell the story. We sat there, and we had a great ceremony, and it was awesome. And the director of Care One that day, she goes, well, if I knew all these people were going to be here, I would have put a two in front of that five. I told her I had a Sharpie. It didn't work. But the idea, though, is I think they, I think these $5,000 here and the $5,000 there are, these companies are starting to put their foot in the water and work with us. If we can prove ourselves to them, they will come back to the table, and they will come back each and every single time and help us when we need the help. And Lincoln First Financial, we just got that news last week. We will have another ceremony for them. We were able to get another $5,000. So, I'll have a good day when I start to break that $5,000 mark. But in the meantime, $15,000 in less than 10 months on a program and a model that really is not even really structured yet, I think is fairly successful. And to wrap everything together, it's kind of a tough slide to see. I can't even see it. So, but it's the journey from good to great. And it's basically everything that I just talked about. And I just wanted to reinforce the fact that this process doesn't happen overnight. And I do have, and we've talked as a board, and we've talked as a staff, and we've talked a lot about where we want to be and where we want to go and how we're going to get there. And kind of years one and two, those are the things we want to accomplish. Years two and four, what we want to accomplish. And then, years four and five, really, everything should be implemented. And really, we want to be, we want to be on the conversation with the National PAL. And we want the National PAL to look at us and say, hey, Parsippany is doing it right. Parsippany knows what they're doing, and they're right in line with the concepts and the visions of the National PAL as well. But ultimately, all of these things in between need to get done. And I think we're really close to being there. And we're excited. And I really truly want to just thank everyone, the mayor, the council, my board, our board, and everybody that comes to work every day at the PAL. It's a privilege. It's fun. It's exciting. I love it. I will continue to love it. And I will continue to have pride in both Parsippany and the PAL every single day that I come to work. Any questions at all?
Yeah, Sam?
Yeah.
Did you finish the audit this year? And how did that go?
The audit was completed just about two weeks ago. It was a clean audit. There were no fatal or no real material findings. We were, I was pleasantly surprised. There were about 15 to 20 procedural and policy-driven findings that we need to basically put in place. The biggest red flag that I would say is that there is no policy and no procedure book in place at the PAL. So, when it comes to procurement, when it comes to finance procedures, when it comes to internal HR procedures, they just don't exist. So, that's going to be one of our next tasks to kind of start to put that together as an organization and bring that forward. And that should solve a lot of the findings.
Great, thank you.
I know I've spoken to you before, Sam?
Yes.
About the MAC program?
Yes.
Has anything been going forward with that?
So, where we are with MAC is the applications and the paperwork has continued to be kind of in process, on schedule with the county. However, as a committee, we don't have one, right? So, we have to still create that committee to sit down and talk about a structure and a plan for what we want to do as a committee. So, in doing so, I am doing a lot of my work and our programming in the same line with a lot of the things that we've talked about. You saw on the previous slide with the bullying and the suicide awareness, drugs, lead, a lot of those different things. So, hopefully, as soon as we're ready to kind of kick off the ground, we could start to implement some of the things that we're doing at the PAL and then expand that out into the community with the school district as well. So, I'm trying to work as much as I can within the MAC without having a MAC kind of established.
Okay, because I did speak with several of the ladies that were on the board before.
Yeah.
And they're all willing to come back again and to assist. It was a good group of ladies and gentlemen. And they do do marvelous.
Councilwoman, I, before we leave tonight, I'll even sit here and wait if we can set a date to sit down and talk and figure out how we want to move forward. I am all in. You know I am.
I would greatly appreciate that.
Yes, without a doubt.
Thank you.
Can you tell me with the MAC program?
Municipal Alliance Committee.
And through you, Council President, the administration has three names to add to that, too. So, I'll forward that to you.
Oh, great.
Nice job. The Parkinson's program is unbelievable. And if anybody doesn't believe in that, all they need to do is look up Freddie Roach.
Freddie Roach.
Freddie Roach is the, he is the trainer to Manny Pacquiao. And he is someone who has Parkinson's. And he's survived through all that due to boxing. So, it's just something if you ever need anybody who wants evidence, they can just look that up. And they can see that that does work.
It is, when I've talked and learned and been a part of researching the program, I literally get chills when I think about, you know, what we can do in that building. And we have a facility already set and ready. It's turnkey. It's walk-in and let's start the program, and let's go. So, you know, sending Ed Leahy out to get trained was a no-brainer. And we're going to be able to, we really truly believe we can have 30 to 50, if not more, participants in that program in a very, very relatively quick time.
Well, Mr. Jonas, thank you very much for your presentation and the board for being here. Mr. Garrick and Joe, one of the things that we talked about years ago was below the VFW building, we own the property below that. It used to be a house there many years ago, on the Dead End Street?
Yes.
And we were talking about expanding the parking lot for the PAL. And that's the only spot that would be available to expand the parking lot so you can get some of those cars off of Baldwin Road.
For sure. And as Mr. O'Neill can definitely agree with, we have a...
I always park in his parking lot.
He can tell you. And we, it's a, it's a struggle every day. I have a constant conversation with our community, neighbors across the street. They come across, they understand. They're good about it. But it's a problem.
As a future project, maybe we can look into doing that.
But I also have been able to have the conversation with the administrator and our engineer in being able to create a walkway from our parking lot and over the creek, just putting in a small bridge right down to the Smith parking lot. I think that will be able to relieve an exorbitant amount of parking. Because right now, between signage and just, and let's be honest, people don't read, right? You know, they come in, they just park where they want to park, and they don't really worry about what the sign says. So, we need to do a better job with signage and creating obvious walking points, safe walking points along Baldwin. And the chief, I know, has already done a study. Baldwin is, chief, 30, 40,000 traffic? What was the number? I mean, was it?
It was 20,000.
20, okay. During business hours? And I can't tell you the amount of kids that walk from Starbucks across Baldwin or are coming from the fields and walking down Baldwin to our building. And I...